All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular City Commission meeting for June 21st, 2021. Tabitha, can you give us a roll call, please?
Mayor Young.
Here.
Commissioner Guthrie will be late this evening. Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Thank you. For invocation time, we have Reverend Mark Somerville from the Family Worship Center.
Our Arch would be this evening. Our gracious Father, we're thankful tonight that we can come to you and ask for your wisdom and for your guidance in this City Council meeting. We thank you for your presence as here. We just ask your blessing upon each of the one that participates tonight. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Joe, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see that there are no proclamations or recognitions on the agenda tonight, so we'll move to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at (316) 321-9100. By 5:00 PM, the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Do we have any personal appearances tonight, Tabitha?
No.
Move on to public comment. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Is there anyone here for public comment tonight? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we'll consider the approval of an advisory board application for the Planning Commission for Donald Nichols for a term set to expire 12/31/2023. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nothing on old business, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 10 under New Business, Application to Rezone O1 to I1, 10 lots in the El Dorado Business Park.
Yes, Mayor and Commission. For consideration before you tonight, and also heard at the public hearing of the Planning Commission, we'd like you to consider a potential rezone of the area shaded within the yellow boundary out there in our El Dorado Business Park. Currently, this property is zoned OI, Office Institutional, which is meant for things like hotels, motels, clinics, retail-type uses, daycare centers. And we're just not seeing that in the market. We're seeing more and more of a need of smaller parcel industrial, light industrial zoned properties. So what we're requesting is a rezone of this portion to I1 Light Industrial. To the south, still contained in the El Dorado Business Park, the gray shaded area, that is all currently zoned I1 today. You might be familiar with Flint Hill Services' location out there on Walnut Valley Drive, that is currently zoned I1 as well. The Planning Commission recommended rezoning this property 6 to 0.
Do I have a motion?
You ready? I move to approve case number 21-03REZ, requesting a rezoning of 10 lots in the El Dorado Business Park to I1 Light Industrial District. Does ordinance number G1355 be approved?
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion or questions for Scott? Okay, we'll need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Badway.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mayor Young.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, number 11, Application to Rezone R1 to R3, 522 West Fifth Avenue.
Yes, applicant on this project is looking at building a nursing-type facility on this site. This property used to contain Jefferson or Lincoln Elementary, that was demolished a few years back when the new school was built. Some things you can see, and considering the rezone, the impacts potentially that the Planning Commission heard at the public hearing, could be visual, noise, traffic, higher kind of volume in the area. Some of the benefits we looked at were less than 1% of the rentals in town are vacant. 17 homes out of the 3,300 available are for sale today. Flint Creek recently completed 32 homes and had over 500 applications. So there's a clean site there today. Here's a conceptual rendering of what the first facility will look like. I believe we have an app here if you have any questions up there as well.
Is this going, is it 12, 12 separate rooms? Is that?
Yeah, it's 12.
I'm gonna let you come up here.
Come on up, please.
And you get to give your name and address, and then we get to ask questions.
My name is Clint Arndt, and I'm the owner of Semifire Care Homes. I reside in Forty Kansas. My Wi-Fi, own these businesses, so our intent today is to expand our locations to El Dorado. A Home Plus is an adult care home licensed with the state of Kansas. It's a smaller type of facility that provides more of a home-like environment. It consists of 12 rooms, kitchen, dining room, and some recreational area. The site is operated 24/7 by licensed nursing staff, and additional service besides long-term care is we offer daily care and respite care. Many of the caregivers taking care of a loved one, and just once a weekend off, once they go on vacation, they could drop them off. So those are the three types of services. But there are 12 private rooms, like you said, that would have long-term care residents. You know, we believe that senior care is in demand in El Dorado, along with almost everywhere else there is. Besides helping have a place for more senior care in El Dorado, it also will provide about 15 to 20 jobs in El Dorado. We believe the property would contribute to the neighborhood with a nice, clean appearance. Some of the, by zoning this multifamily, some of the cons people would think would be increased traffic flow. I know that's brought up before. However, this type of multifamily would not increase traffic flow. The residents do not drive in this. It's not, it's not, it's a type of assisted living, but this is more skilled nursing. It's more for dementia-type patients. So, except for family visiting and the two to four staff at any given time, that would be all the traffic flow it would actually add.
Can't believe it would be near as much traffic as when it was at El Dorado.
Correct. Right. You know, overall, we just feel like this is a great benefit for El Dorado, to provide additional senior and elderly services, and to help develop a location within an existing neighborhood here in town.
So you're building on this little bitty piece?
So we started on the corner of this, of this. If this is successful, we would like to add a identical building directly west, on the other side of the park lot. And if that's successful, we would like to expand. We want this whole area to be senior living, so those would be for more the purpose of basically replacing nursing home, an alternative solution to a nursing home. But if we further developed, you know, we consider more assisted living, or even senior duplexes, things of that nature, where they could possibly have two or three stages of their senior life, independent living, assisted living, and then skilled nursing. So if this is successful, we'd like to further develop this area and utilize it for those purposes, so.
It's gonna be a nice development for that area. Sure looks like it.
Are you ready? I am ready for a motion.
I move to approve case number 21-04REZ, requesting a rezoning of 522 West Fifth Avenue to R3 Multifamily Residential District, and the ordinance number G1356 be approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion or any questions for this topic? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Badway.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mayor Young.
Yes. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Next item, number 12, Special Use Permit Application for 522 West Fifth.
Yes, so the same exact property, it has now been rezoned to R3, which would allow that type of use. We do require special use permit for nursing-type facilities. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this as well, and voted 6-0 to approve.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve case number 21-03SUP, requesting a special use permit for the nursing or comal- comalascent home at 522 West Fifth Avenue, and the ordinance number G1357 be approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Badway.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mayor Young.
Yes. Trucking right along, Agenda Item Number 13, The Deer Run Final Plat.
Yes, Mayor and Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed and approved the Deer Run Final Plats.
I'm sorry, hang on just a second. Thank you again, Mr. Arndt, for putting this together. I agree with you that we have a growing need across, across the country, but especially in Kansas and North Community, for senior living. So I think this will be a great project, and I'm looking forward to seeing it come to fruition, so. Appreciate you guys investing here.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Scott.
Oh, no, you're good. So the Planning Commission reviewed the Deer Run Final Plat at their May 27 meeting. They voted 6 to 0 to approve the plats. This addition comes off near the intersection of Boyer Road and Third Avenue, which is on the northwest corner here. This is the site that you previously had heard the rezone case from R1 to R2 on, that was voted down. The developer took it back and decided to go with the R1, keep it as a single-family residential zone property. He is, he is putting in a sidewalk on the east side of the street and wrapping on around the cul-de-sac. By doing that, that allows him a density bonus within our subdivision regulations, where he can build those single-family homes on smaller lots, smaller lot widths, reduce setbacks. So he wasn't, he didn't have to do a bunch of work and replating and trying to configure this. So before you tonight, what you guys are considering is accepting the right-of-way and easement dedications for the Deer Run Final Plat.
Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the right-of-way and easement dedications in the Deer Run Final Plats.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion or questions for Scott? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 14, Evergi Underground Utility Proposal.
Evergi, our electric company, is investing in upgrading the above-ground electric infrastructure in the downtown parking lots. I believe it's, Scott, is that the 100 blocks?
So the scope of the project area would be the 100 block of North Main on the east side, then up the alleys, the Sunshine Alley, or the alley between Coots, and then as well as the alley behind the 100 block of North Main on the west side as well.
So as part of that, they had identified those systems as needing upgraded, and Evergi has capital investment dollars set aside to annually make various upgrades and infrastructure improvements throughout their system. And because this is a pretty old system that needs to be upgraded, right now it's a current, it's a 4-kilovolt system, and they would like to upgrade that to a 12-kilovolt system. And then with that, they would upgrade all of the connections and meters that are on the commercial businesses, so it'll be no cost in terms of upgrading that, those facilities on the private buildings as well. So when this came about, well, it's been a little while, but there's been some talks about undergrounding utilities in those two blocks. Originally, Evergi said we would underground the overhead utilities. However, that would be at the cost entirely of the city, because Evergi has no plans of putting those underground. And since we have no plans of upgrading that infrastructure, the city had to pay for upgrading as well as putting them underground. At that point in time, the cost of the project was somewhere in the neighborhood of $8,000 to $900,000, and the city decided, you know, we weren't gonna move that forward for a conversation, given the cost. Since Evergi is moving forward with upgrading the system, irregardless of whether the city participates or not, they reached out to us to see if we would be interested now to participate in undergrounding the infrastructure, because this would be the ideal time to do that. They would be on the hook for the upgrading of the infrastructure, as they, as if they would be doing it anyway, because they're gonna do it irregardless of whether the city participates, to the tune of approximately half a million dollars. The city would be responsible for the undergrounding portion of the project if we elected to do so, and that is estimated at about $340,000 just for the electric piece of the project. In addition to that, those poles behind the two, the two blocks also include infrastructure from Cox Communications, as well as AT&amp;T. We've been in contact with Cox Communications, and they have stated that they estimate the cost for undergrounding their facilities at about $40,000. So we would tack that on to the $340,000 for Evergi's cost, bring the project to about $380,000 for the city. But even with that, so if we had underground Evergi and AT, or I'm sorry, Evergi and Cox's facilities, AT&amp;T has not, however, agreed to participate in the project. Their, their infrastructure would remain on the poles, and the city currently has no mechanism to require them to go underground in the event that we were to do this. And in addition to that, we would anticipate that AT&amp;T's cost would be quite substantial, because the engineering would be necessary to make their network work. So usually, when you make these changes, you have to change several elements downstream or upstream in order to make it, make it all function. AT&amp;T has not really been, we've not been able to really communicate with them to understand what that one might look like, so we have no cost associated with AT&amp;T undergrounding their facilities. So if the city participates in this project, our cost would be approximately $380,000. We would do some of that work internally as in-kind, so we would facilitate the running of conduits, and we'd do as much of the work as we could, subject to coordination with both of those two utilities. And I believe we've done similar work in the past as well. So this is before you all for conversation. Evergi has informed the city that they need to know as soon as possible, ideally by July, so that they can place this project on their calendar for this year. If they don't know by July, the project will presumably be kicked until 2022. And if it's not done in 2022, there may be the possibility that the project, they'll have to go overhead, and there won't be another opportunity to go underground, at least with Evergi participating in the cost of the project. So we want to bring this to you for your consideration.
So this final, this proposal from Evergi was received by the city since our last meeting, with these costs. And then they're, so they're wanting a decision on $380,000 expenditure right away. I guess my question would be, can we continue to, is there a way that we can continue the conversation with Evergi about this project and see what we can do to work to bring AT&amp;T to the table? Because while undergrounding the infrastructure would certainly enhance the property down there, it's a great beautification project, and I think the business would appreciate it. If we don't get AT&amp;T onboard, we're not undergrounding, we'll still have overhead lines down there. The poles don't go there.
Then you're gonna have, then you're gonna have poles, and you're gonna have pad mount transformers.
Right.
You're gonna have both.
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely reach out. I mean, Evergi, I think their, their time deadline is really, you know, do you want the project in this year or not? If, if we can, if we don't have a priority of getting them this year, we can, we can talk to them and have a conversation with them. But if we don't want to know in early July, I think they'll, they'll say, well, we'll, we'll wait for a decision a little bit after that, but if, if not, then we'll move forward to 2022.
Sure, I guess my question, my question though is if, if, if given direction by the commission, can staff work on getting Evergi back at the table, Cox and AT&amp;T to see what, see if we can make this project maybe still go this year even? I know that Evergi wants a decision by early July, but...
Is there gonna be any cost review? Has anybody asked? Because usually, when you've got underground primary coming in, and you have your pad mount transformer, then you, then you gotta bury a line up to the business, and the meter goes on the business. And normally, that's on the business. So is there gonna be, does that price include the secondary from the pad mount transformer to the building? Because that'll be substantial, because that'll all...
Does that fall under customer upgrade cost?
Yeah, so the total cost of the project is included in the numbers that we quoted to you. Evergi will upgrade the infrastructure that is theirs, as well as the customer connection, and then the city would be responsible for that portion of the project that is in excess of the normal upgrade, that'll be, that'll be attributed to the undergrounding of the infrastructure. But all of that, all the costs that you mentioned are included in this.
Okay. On that $380,000, are they asking for the money all at once, or can we break it up in payments?
So we haven't actually asked Evergi if they would break up the payments. At this point in time, we can definitely do that. My sense would be that they would prefer us to pay all in front, but we can always ask for that, we ask that question of Evergi. I don't know, Scott, if you...
I think they would be, they are open to the idea of the need being.
I think that's the big question to ask, right? I mean, those two things, especially if we have to add the, as we add the AT&amp;T piece in this, our cost of that 340 is gonna, or 380 is gonna go up if we were to participate in this, because we'll have some cost in AT&amp;T. And so being able to write that check all at once, or try and spread it out over, you know, some time, would be beneficial.
In my opinion, if you don't, you don't get AT&amp;T, I mean, why come, why go in there and bury that primary if you're still gonna have poles up in there? That doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Right. I agree.
But this is also a once-in-a, I mean, once they put those in, they're not coming back in a couple of years to give us the opportunity to underground them. So we have to make the decision whether we want them underground and do everything we can to get them there this time, otherwise we're gonna have poles.
Or next year.
Or next year. Otherwise, we're gonna be stuck with poles forever.
So I think if the commission says we're not interested right now, let's say, for example, and Evergi goes and upgrades their infrastructure, and then let's fast-forward three years from now, and the commission says we want to underground them, at that point, then we refer back to the prior model, where Evergi says you can do it, the city, but you're gonna pay for the entire cost, which is gonna be approximately $8,000 to $900,000.
It'll be more than that then.
So the option underground will always be there, it's just how much you pay.
Well, yeah.
Right.
Better now than then.
Right.
I think we need to continue talking.
I think, yeah, I mean, I would entertain a motion from the commission to table this for further conversation, with some direction to city staff, to get Evergi and Cox and AT&amp;T at the table, so we can try and maybe make the whole project work. I think it's a great project, but I think we've been given a week's notice by Evergi to, with this, a week...
They've had a little bit longer notice, but the commission hasn't had a beating.
Well, we, I mean, I'm saying you got, you got the letter from Evergi since our last meeting, so that was two weeks ago.
So, yeah, we just need some type of direction on that, and we can proceed with talking to Evergi.
If AT&amp;T isn't interested, I don't see, I don't see any reason to do it, because they don't have to take their stuff off those poles.
That's right.
One thing we did discuss, and I've discussed it with the other utilities, is the communication focuses, is they all share trench agreements, so say we can get two of them on board, but one isn't, whoever that is, and we can go ahead and place an empty conduit in the trench that's available for future use. So saying the unfortunate fact, we get two of them to agree, and we go underground, we got one that must hang out on poles that are chopped off. Once Evergi is off, there's potential future they could utilize that conduit.
We're gonna terminate it, though.
Yeah. It's just another, then the alley would be torn up again. Another thing on this is, you know, we would, there'd be transformers, obviously, in the parking lots along the back of these buildings, you know, pad mount transformers. So we reconfigure the parking, there'd be some changes throughout there.
I think there's, it, it provides a great opportunity to reconfigure the parking, redo the parking lot, maybe change ingress egress, fix some of the safety hazards that are, that exist in that parking lot with the, with the traffic flow. This is a great opportunity, but I, I think, again, the big challenge is until the telephone, until the poles are gone, it makes it even more difficult to do the correct reconfiguration of the parking lot. I mean, because we're, we still have poles out there. So I mean, I think that, from my perspective, I think it warrants a further discussion with Evergi and Cox, and trying to get AT&amp;T onboard. I'm curious what we have to do to try to get them onboard. And we know that that's gonna increase the cost, and so we'd have to figure that out.
Yeah, and Cox has given us a preliminary nod that they would be willing to participate, which is where we got the $40,000 worth of that, and it's AT&amp;T getting into that job.
Because they're gonna wanna change all their stuff to fiber. All those, all those twisted pairs they've got up there now, they're gonna want that all, that new stuff to all be fiber.
So do we wanna make the motion to table this for discussion, further discussion, and advise, asks, advise staff to get the interested parties at the table, and also to discuss with Evergi this, maybe spreading out the payments? Is that kind of the motion that we're thinking about?
So I make that motion.
I was gonna ask Phil if that was a motion.
And I'll second it. We've got a motion made in a second.
You can make a motion. I made one, and it's...
You got, you got all that, Tabitha? If not, it's on tape.
I'll get it from video, hopefully.
Okay. So we have motion in the second. Any further discussion or questions, thoughts? I think it'd be great if we could get this project rolling and get it to work, but it's, as I was talking to someone on the phone earlier, that, that I first met when I was in high school, I said, you know, you guys taught us, if you're gonna do something right, if you're gonna do something, do it right the first time. So I wanna make sure that we get, get this done right, if we're gonna do it. So I think, I think this is a good motion, and hopefully a good opportunity to effect some change down there, improve things downtown. So, any thoughts, other comments? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So David, you'll be in touch with Evergi and the groups, and I think they've been in some communication with Main Street, it's an opportunity to chat with those guys too, and see kind of what, if they've got any additional information. Pressure needs to be applied here, maybe to AT&amp;T, if anyone's got contacts there to try and get them onboard with this, so that's where the conversation comes in. That is all on New Business now. There's no agenda items on discussion. So we'll move on to report, City Commission reports, and advisory board updates. Commissioner Wilkinson.
Not had another meeting since last meeting.
Library hadn't been... We're gonna have our meeting this, on the 24th, at Gravity Works.
It's at the college.
It's at the college, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, they do meetings? The, the Thursday meetings. Yeah, it's, you know, the one...
Commissioner Guthrie.
Sorry I'm late. I normally leave you 20 minutes late.
You got here just in time.
Guys just like crammed it all out. I hope everything went well.
Did.
The, has anybody talked about the email that we received about the property that we were, we were doing the plat on? Did anybody get a chance to read that?
Yeah, I read the email.
Okay. Was that covered, was that discussed?
We didn't discuss the email.
Okay, I think the biggest thing that I, the biggest thing that I, I know Sarah is out there, I see her all week out running around. It seems like we've got a lot of lots that aren't getting mowed. There's a ton of lots in town, and I know Sarah is as diligent as anybody could be with that. My concern is, is that, that this is not the only, only time I hear about people talking about lots not getting mowed. I've been asked multiple times this last two weeks, can we speed up that process of getting these lots actually mowed? Is there a way to do that?
So this is a question that comes up every year with respect to mowing. Unfortunately, I wish the answer, I wish I could say, yes, we can speed it up. Unfortunately, soil weeds and grass is a state law, and there are some things that we can tweak internally, but for the most part, given the process that is followed by law, we can't really...
So it's out of our hands?
Yeah, I mean, because if we send you a letter, we're gonna send it to you by certified mail. You can deny that letter three times, and every time you do that, that extends the process. Most of these people who get these letters are savvy to the process. They know, oh, I gotta certify my letter, I'm just gonna sit on it, gonna wait for the second one. You know, so they played a game, they played well. Then by the time it gets to that point, you know, and by the time we mow it, it's already really high, particularly with a little rain. So we understand that we do get a lot of people that would like the process faster, we wish we could make it faster, but this is not something we can, it's not local ordinance, it's an ordinance that just basically adopts state law. And I think the difficulty is people have to understand there's two sides of this coin. On the one side, and this may sound kind of counterintuitive, but on the one side we have the adjacent property owner's rights, but we also have the property owner's rights, and their notice rights. In other words, if you are in violation, and the city is going to go through a process that's gonna lead to increased assessments on your property, despite the fact that you're not following the law, you are entitled to notification of that and then accept. So, being as that as it may, we are unable to change that unless we can get, you know, the state to change that. Unfortunately, that's not really feasible. But Sarah does her best to, not necessarily work around that, but try to negotiate and work with property owners as best she can to get them to kind of do it themselves, so we don't have to go through this lengthy process, especially to avoid if it gets a court, things like that, because then it just gets delayed damage for a minute. She's, she's got a pretty good batting average on that, but she's not even hitting 100.
She does, she does a great job, I'm not...
He's gonna tear it up.
It brought, it, it's a bigger subject is what I'm asking. Not that one in particular, it just, I saw it earlier, and I, it was on my mind, but it was, it brought up other, other conversations they had. The second thing that I wanted to bring to the commission, we haven't met in a work session in a very long time. I wanted to, I wanted to bring up the possibility of doing, trying to spur on some sort of volunteerism in town when it goes to groups, church groups, the, all the different fraternal organizations in town were coming out of a time where nobody could really do anything. So I think that there's kind of a, a pent-up energy. And I've been kind of thinking about this, I've been kicking around with a few people, including the mayor. I would like to propose that we sponsor a trophy that would recognize, like, we have a dinner at the end of the year, but like, these group, like, what group volunteers more, like, more hours? Like, I've been trying to work out a formula in my head of how to get this, but I think I've got it. But I think like an El Dorado Cup, kind of like the Stanley Cup, where each of these organizations could, you know, wear that for a year in their facility or wherever they are. And then each year, you know, we, the more hours that each group, whether it's Holly or, you know, whatever, it could be anybody, and just try to spur that on a little bit. And I think that that would, that could be a fun thing that could spur on some volunteerism with volunteer hours, clay it out of the lake, clay it in the parks, paint, you know, houses that need to be painted, help mow yards, like, stuff like that. I think that there could be an opportunity there to do that. I'd like to throw that, throw that in the water and see what catches.
You've mentioned that at, briefly mentioned that at a previous work session, and it felt like there was just kind of general support for that, if we could get the kind of the guidelines and the, you know, and that stuff behind it, but if...
Do you know other communities that do it?
No. No, I'm not saying this is an original idea, I might have put it somewhere at some point.
Thinking steel guidelines from another city.
And quite possibly could be.
Aren't you doing it?
But I'm, again, I don't know. I'm not stealing it off of anybody else, I just kind of thought that something like that, some reason, one more reason to get groups out to help with things.
I mean, I personally am super supportive of the concept, I want, you know, we need, we need the, the guidelines for it, kind of how it's gonna work, and I, and I think that we wanna make sure that we don't add it, and I don't think that it will, but we wanna make sure that as we implement these types of things, we don't add a bunch of excess administrative overhead to city staff. So I mean, we need to look at the structure of it.
Right.
But I'm supportive of the concept, I was when we talked about it before, I think it's great. I'm always a fan of, you know, opportunities for, to get, for individuals or groups to get involved throughout the community, so.
El Dorado Community Pride Award.
You guys wanna have Matt put together some guidelines and bring them to us at the, at a work session? At the next work session? We've got one next month. Would you be, would you be ready, you think, by the time you just talk through the guidelines?
Yeah.
You guys good with that?
You could even do something like volunteer group of the week.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just kind of thinking, trying to think of something to, to spur it on, you know, incentivize it a little bit. I mean, I'm not saying cash prices, but I'm just saying like that, kind of a big, and then maybe at the end of the year, we have a big meal, a big dinner banquet, where all the groups and representatives, and it's handed off, and each year it gets taller and taller.
Yeah, I think it's great, I mean, I think it's great.
Ride it up.
And I did get the medal and the black shirt, I'm sorry.
What?
Redream.
If you read, if you read the email on the mowing, you've gone down if you knew there it was.
Perfect, yeah, bring it to us next week.
That's all I got.
So, to that point, David, I mentioned to David and to the commission here a month or so ago, an idea that a neighboring community had done for a project or to get neighborhoods involved in painting some fire hydrants. David put together some guidelines. I was planning on bringing that to the work session as well, just to kind of go over that with you guys and see if we could have David and city staff send that out as a, as a little local contest for creativity in painting some fire hydrants. There's some guidelines behind it, some parts of the fire hydrant that we don't paint for reasons, but there can be some neat designs.
Is that, is that the general thing with fire hydrants? It's certain things you just don't paint, but the rest can be?
Well, for the El Dorado Fire Department.
Tell them you know much pressure.
The top of the fire hydrant is painted a certain color because it tells the fire department what the pressure is.
Okay.
Incidentally, if you do not want to run fire hydrant, that's actually not a good pressure, which is kind of why we're likely to do that. So, wood is best, red is not, so, well, we're just asking people not to for sure paint that top, because that communicates the pressure.
So we've, David, David and I have worked on putting together some of those guidelines to present at the next work session, so we'll talk to you guys about that then. But I think any opportunity we have to get community involved in things around town is a great opportunity, so. That's what I've got, city managers report.
I'm sure I have a presentation here, I've never, I've seen a presentation some ago.
If you'd like, I can do it.
I'm very green, but I feel like I can do it.
If you'd like, I can do it.
Yeah, I can probably do it. So, our 150th is coming up, September 11th.
This week was the release.
This week was the release, and so we have our lineup for the concert. It's gonna take place, free concert, it's gonna take place the 11th. We have full, full lineup. We have, starting off, we have Chase Holden Band, Matt Eagle's Band, Big Fat Fun, and then our headliner, Mrs. Kaylee Hammack.
Lead through, and then you'll get there.
You know, this is what she gets for not showing me the presentation ahead.
We were distracted before the meeting, and so I can get to show it to you.
All right, so we have the 9/11 memorial. Before the celebration, the city will take time to remember the victims of the September 11 terrorist attack. And so that will take place at the courthouse beginning at 9:00 AM. Then we'll have a parade, 100, oh, 150 Fest, not the, we'll officially begin at 9:00 AM with parade featuring floats from groups, local businesses and organizations. The commission can put a float in if you guys would like to get together and do that. Just love to have it there so we can do the opening thing. Groups who wish for a special parade can do so for free by requesting an application from the city hall. Prices will be awarded for best floats, maybe a couple of the prices as well. That will be downtown at 10:00 AM, right down here on our main float route. Then we have a bunch of activities throughout the day, to include art markets, car show, cornhole tournaments. So a lot of different things for different people, so, you know, you don't have to participate in all of them, they'll be inviting you. But if you're more interested in cars, you're not so much in cornhole, we try to do it, so there's something for everybody.
There will also be several performances downtown amongst these activities during the day from our local run corps, dance groups, other trailering groups, things like that, so they'll be there too.
We'll also have food trucks, a beer garden, featuring, you know, our signature El Dorado. Wheat beer that's gonna be produced by our local brewery, local brewery company. Food applications are open, so if you know people that have food truck, or if somebody's watching this, you can go ahead and contact city hall, and we'll get you hooked up the applications, we can get you taken care of. So there'll be lots of food and drink available downtown. And then as I mentioned at the beginning of this, we will have a free community concert featuring our headline, Kaylee Hammack, as well as Chase Holden, Matt Eagle's Band and Big Fat Fun. So that'll be fun. There's a special map, it's downtown, you can see that, there'll be a lot of streets blocked out, but while maybe you're keeping it, it will be fun as well. And then throughout the, the rest of the summer, the summer did officially start today. So one thing I did wanna talk about is we have the El Dorado Foodie Tour, which isn't on that, so I'll talk about it in a minute. But on June 28th through July 2nd, we have the Els Lodge Medallion Hunt, which I was gonna mention. And I can read this a little bit better. So we have, we, we have a medallion, so this is different than the coins. This is actually a medallion, a tool that's approximately, it's about this big, give or take. And this is gonna be hidden somewhere in El Dorado. There will be clues that will be located, so there'll be a clue that'll be released, and then you'll have to go to that clue where that clue leads you, and then there'll be another clue. So it's kind of like a scavenger hunt, you'll go from clue to clue to clue, and then it'll lead you to the medallion. Although, time is of the essence, because the person who finds the medallion first will receive the prize. So you don't wanna linger too long. My understanding is that we will release the first clue on 28th, is that correct? And it looks like the prize will include four VIP tickets to the 150 Fest. So, get out there and look for the medallion, I can't tell you what it looks like, it's just this big.
It's like the old Perry Board Medallion, so, it'll take place over next week.
I still can't tell you what it looks like, because I don't know what that means. So from July 5th through the night on Friday.
So is it every, is it every day, like, like they used to do it, not, you go from clue to clue? So every day a new clue is released?
Yes.
Okay, that, you're not, it makes perfect sense, we all, we all watched it, they did that in Wichita for years. So it's each, so every day is a new clue?
Gotcha.
And then, and that's released out, not you go from clue to, like, spot to spot?
They'll be released on our social media pages and our website, and then there'll also be a printed copy here at city hall for those who don't have access to social media or website, they just have to wait until 8:00 AM to come see it.
Okay.
But it will be first...
Time is still of the essence, first of all, they will get prizes. So from July 5th to 9th.
It's the 10th, I'm sorry, you got that wrong. 5th through the 10th. I know, it's 5th through the 10th.
I will lose cause the information provided. So Holly Frontier will sponsor a kids' fest the week of July 5th. They have a number of different activities to include movies, swimming, fishing, community services, a community service day, and a track and field day, so a lot of different things for young people, all at no cost.
Is there an age limit?
There is, well, we're all kids at heart, but I...
There are, there are age limits for some of the activities due to what they are. I think like the track and field day is encouraged for like age seven to something. But mostly, it's like the movie day, the swim day, there's no age limit, it's just asking on the movie day that parents limit the number of adults that come with the kids, that way more kids can actually be in the movie.
Makes sense. So we really appreciate Holly Frontier for sponsoring Kids a Week this year, because without them, kids, we would necessarily have all of the activities that we have scheduled this week, this year. And then from August 20th through the 21st, we'll have the disc golf tournament, we'll have a movie night, and a kids' carnival, you know, so that'll be fun. Is there anything else I need to say about that?
What movie are you gonna show?
Um, I, I don't know that we've got it definitely nailed down, but I believe it's going to be Rudy, to kick off football season.
Ruby.
Rudy.
Start the walk on Rudy.
Yeah, that's not... It's not that, that's a, we've asked for it.
You have to buy the license and things like that.
Sure.
We don't know if it's available, it's a weird thing, but anyway. So those are some of the events that are coming soon to El Dorado for the 150 Fest.
Great.
One thing that was not on the list, and I don't know if this is a real 150 event or not, but I was gonna talk about it anyway, so the El Dorado Foodie Tour begins this week. If you, they can pick these up at the restaurants that are participating, and at city hall. That'll be goes off in a minute, but you can get one of these passports, and when you go to one of our restaurants that are participating, they will sign off, or no, no, I'm sorry, they don't sign off, they will take, you take a selfie of yourself at the restaurant, or your food, or whatever, and you can be with hashtag #experienceEldo, and you may win a prize from the foodie. So our participating restaurants include P S Mexicana, Mo's Grill, Bruko Deli Deli, True Lies, Aura Hibachi, Walden River Brewing Company, Miss Van Kitchen, Hampton's, and Turner Donuts. So you can pick one of the passports up at any of those locations, as will city hall. We encourage everyone to go to all of them, but you don't have to necessarily win, you can just, you just have to go to one, and then, what do you call that, take a selfie?
So you'll share yours with me, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
There's one for you. So that's one of the fun things we've got planned out for the summer, so it started, because it started today, you're already a day behind. Let's see, in addition, so one thing we didn't have on there, the library is doing a special 150th celebration of sorts. They're asking folks from El Dorado to provide pictures, documents, just different artifacts from the past. And what they're gonna do is they're going to upload these to a special website that citizens can go through there and search and look through and peruse, so they can kind of see the memories of El Dorado from, from the beginning. So if you know of anyone that's got stuff, or if you have stuff, citizens have stuff, bring those down to the Bradford Memorial Library, and they will upload those materials to the website so that others can view them, I believe it probably will be searchable so that you can have, look at that as well. So, that's gonna be a pretty cool thing that's gonna be happening as well. Let's see, so that's, that's pretty much it, that's all we have for right now.
I had one request, and I don't know if you guys could do it, for the 150th, is bringing the Marching Cobras to El Dorado, like they used to be in the past, at the parades every year.
I don't know what that is.
I, I believe that we had this conversation, and somebody called, but I don't know what the result of that call was, so I'll find out.
Okay.
But we have had a... But we have had that conversation.
I know you guys have done a good job putting it together, but that was some request that people had, if we could do that, because it's a memory of El Dorado.
It is.
Yeah, so speaking of the Marching Cobras, we will have the Crossmen in town, are they from Texas, right?
San Antonio.
San Antonio. So you may recall the Drums Across Kansas competition that's been held in El Dorado for the last six years.
Some big ways.
They didn't film last year because of COVID, but the last two years prior to that. They are, there's a team, the Crossmen, they'll be, they'll be in El Dorado for 30 days practicing at BG Stadium, so they'll be, they'll be doing quite substantial days of practice at BG Stadium. So we've been working with them to kind of get accommodations, get the stadium, get a number of different things figured out, but as a result of that, we're actually going to be hosting two concerts, not concerts, performances, that'll be available for the community to see the Crossmen perform, since there won't be a Drums Across Kansas at BG Stadium this year, at least we'll have some semblance of performance from the Crossmen, so that'll be coming. We don't have the dates yet, I don't believe, we do, Tabitha has the dates.
The first performance is, we're still working out logistics, but tapping on the mayor's request to have them perform on July 3rd between the Independence Day events, and then on July 18th, that will be at BG Stadium, they will be doing a performance, and that will also include some more local bands and drum corps, so they'll be performing as well. They're really, they're reaching out to high schools hoping to get, and middle schools hoping to get them involved in that.
So some of the logistics concerns that Tabitha's brought up, as we're trying to maybe find some opportunities for transportation, so we may, we may try to get a hold of our school superintendent and see if they can help us out a little bit with getting, getting him down there, just, I mean, just off the top of my head, might be a good call.
Maybe that's one person you think of.
I don't know why I thought it would be.
Just, just the July 3rd day.
Just the July 3rd day, the July 3rd to get him down to McDonald Stadium. So I, thanks for bringing that up, because I have a question about that. Since baseball has been, I guess the Broncos season has been canceled, we're still planning on fireworks at the stadium that night, is that accurate?
That's correct, we are working on, there will, there will be a baseball game at Mac Stadium that night, or night, so.
We should have.
All the baseball and blood fires.
Perfect.
Can we have a confirmation on the teams on Wednesday at this week, doesn't it?
Perfect, okay, that's what I, so I was, I've got a few of those questions, that's a season I can answer. So I maybe reach out to, to the school district and see if they can help us with transportation that day, or the college, you know, we've got a bus or two out there, so, might be an opportunity.
Yep.
That's exciting.
They'll be there about 12 hour days, starting this Saturday, I believe, so.
Good.
You know.
It's going to be great to have them in town, so.
I do have any of them, practicing drum roll on turf in July, June and July is not something I would do, but I sleep in for doing it, and they're here, so we're welcome.
Make sure they get a foodie pass, so they can go around and take selfies.
We're actually working on their food combinations now, in a week.
We do not have an executive session tonight, so I would consider a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Thanks, everybody.